Okay, we'll call this meeting in order. I want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting. It's just a few minutes after five on Monday, the first of May. And if everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call them.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here again.
Here.
All right, here. Entertaining a motion to approve today's agenda. Some move.
One second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? We'll call them.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Across the mayor's desk, I just want to thank Riker Brentley this afternoon for being our videographer. And does the council have anything they would like to share?
Couple of things I wanted to mention. One of them is the community gardens. It's getting warm outside. Next few days, it's going to warm up more and time to plant. Down at the community gardens, we have about three or four open plots yet. So if anybody would like to garden and doesn't have a place at home where they live, maybe live in an apartment or something, contact me and I could get you set up to use the community gardens. The other one is, we're kind of excited that this next Saturday at 5:30, the Stints of Prairie Arts Council is, we have our reception for the emerging local artists. And we have three people who will be there displaying their artwork. One of them's a local gal who, I guess we'll call her local. She grew up in this area, then spent several years out in California and then came back. And I guess she finished her high school here. And she now lives in this area. The other two haven't been in the country that long. They're both from Cuba. And we'll have, so that would be an interesting show to see. We will have a translator there and we hope some besides cookies and lemonade like we normally have, maybe some ethnic food from Cuba also. So that show is at 5:30 on Saturday at the paper office.
Newspaper office.
Newspaper office. So we hope that people can attend that and certainly like to see everybody here and there. So it should be a good show.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to agenda item number six and we'll update from city administrator.
Yeah, it's just a couple of items we remind people of if I get my computer to work. Spring cleanup days is coming up Friday, May 5th and Saturday from, on May 6th. So Friday will be from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There'll be dumpsters down at Veterans Park. And then on Saturday from May 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, the item's not accepted down at Veterans Park that we need to go to the transfer station. Those will still need to go up to Burt. But that Saturday, the transfer station will have special hours from 8:00 a.m. to noon for appliances, electronics, hazardous materials and whatnot. So this will be May 5th and 6th down at Veterans Park. Then it's May already and summer rec programs and the pools are busy getting ready, getting those prepped. So the aquatic center is scheduled to open on Memorial Day, which will be Monday, May 29th. And we've got a number of lifeguard classes available that if folks want to sign up for those, either our AR lifeguard need to get recertified or interested as a, as a summer job, as well as a number of different rec programs that are available on our city website to learn more. And then finally, I'd like to invoke, invite Beau Miller up to introduce our late, most recent city employee.
Hello, guys. Thank you very much. As you guys know, I think most people knew that Haley worked with our community liaison. She did accept a different position over at Health System. With that, we've been super happy with the results we've had so far in that position and definitely wanted to continue to move forward and we've been, so we started the interview process. And we were very fortunate, we had some great candidates. And our top candidate right here is Marissa Miller. I'm going to let her just say a couple of words, explain who she is, a little background on her. If you guys have any questions for her, that'd be awesome.
All right, so Marissa Miller, nice to meet some of you, some of you guys I will be getting to know, I know already. I previously worked at Exceptional Opportunities for eleven and a half years as their program manager, absolutely enjoyed it, it's a great company to work for, just wanted, maybe a little bit more of a challenge to be involved in our community. Then prior to that, I also worked four years in the special education system with the H-1 students at Yawang Community School District. So I'm excited, looking forward to it. Any questions?
Welcome, boy, you're welcome.
Did she have any time to work with Haley?
Oh, no. Well, one nice thing is with Haley's new job, she has one day off a week. It happened to be today. So we were able to pull her in for, I don't know, hour and a half. She came in, kind of just chilled a little bit and I think they kind of built a little rapport. So then maybe there's some, can be some communication if we'd be just, you know, instead of, again, starting over, reinventing the wheel, we don't need to utilize what we have and just push forward and, yeah.
She's very old with a happy caller, happy questions and.
Because today's your first official full day?
Yeah, she came in last week for about four or five hours last week to do a few things. But today was the first full day, yeah.
Good. Well, welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
That's all? Okay, thank you. We'll move to agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. Would you like to come forward and to the podium there so that we can hear you and please just tell us who you are and where you live and?
I'm Jake Schultz. I live in A-01 West Grand Canyon. And I wanted to speak about gun range and operation now in the sewer plant. And you guys got my documents and stuff. And the concern that I have is, you know, it's not just a complaint, it's just, you know, relatively simple solutions, you know, supporting the users and the equal action for the community. For instance, we have an individual that moved from East Millbraier that became concerned with the traffic speed, which was immediately dropped by the city with reduction of speed for everyone on the regular sign put up and, you know, traffic was slowed down. We also built a skate park, then the model we did and replaced it with a more equal friendly version, required less maintenance and understanding that things can go unidentified for many years but still pose a risk of changing, with the changing regulations. Example, we have big small engines building, went through years unnoticed without maintenance repair, long enough for a tree to grow out of the roof. Cleanup repairs and upgrades to the site. We also had introduced concerns about the trees that posed a risk and have properly been removed by the city. We could go on and on with those developments. This disturbance might have been far too long. The area for over twenty-five years. And that seemed like a lot of the focus of the amenities have been projected mutually, thusly, thusly why the support is needed to mitigate the same equal regard, the civil health, enjoyment of the tax property. The proposal is to create separation of equal regard to the city offering and combine county use outdoor and underage with mitigating the action requested for a suitable, stable, equal friendly solution. The state and county departmental professional use has increased and combined along with each department, doubled, doubled the weapons available mounted and caliber rounds increased, all thusly implied to that area, you know, it's, received more traffic and more use and, which increase the risks. The asking for equal adequate safeguards and sources related to the public, the wildlife, the environment, the health, the welfare, uniformly diminished the overall economic development and diversity and growth and improvement interest in that, in that area. So far, it seems like the census, if you're not living in the area, it's not that big of a concern. Just imagine a constant uncontrolled flow of unmasked persons leaving their own homes and being authorized by the city, authorized by the city council to gather together any time of the day, evening, weekend, weekday and for, and for our discharge, high power weapons outside of your residence. Just ask for an equal adequate risk safeguards for our both the children, the grandchildren, friends, pets, family, visitors, diarrhea, skating camps, regarding public health and welfare with limits to the source to be regulated between Monday through Friday, eight to five. And also, you could also do with that dynamic risk itself on site evaluation to see if it's even possible to keep it running in that area. I know the convenience of it is there, but it's far too long that it's been over. And there's plenty of property available in other areas, but I'm not trying to take it away from everybody that's trying to use it, you know, but, you know, the county has its own interest in it, the city has its own interest in it, but the land itself poses an environmental risk by operating within that area. There's a zoning regulation, conservation, it's in a conservation district, flood plain regulations, et cetera. And had it our federal environmental risk for the EPA, CWA, OSHA fractions. Also, we have locate, the gun range is located with feet of the current animal shelter. The animals have four times the huge hearing located in the operation of gun range. Also located with inches of the same gun range, we have the community park, all posing a greater risk to that area. From the road's speed reduction, a big, small engine violation, repairs, you could have the same litigation actions in addressing the city permanent gun range and the limits and the area community. And the Sioux County Speedway ain't permitted to run seven days a week. And so that was one of the, even though we have that and it's a benefit for everybody, it's not, you know, it's not, you can't use it seven days a week and, you know, it doesn't disturb it. But code nine, nine-two-eight, drill twenty, discharging weapons, no person shall discharge a weapon within the city limits except by operation of the city council. Disturbing the peace, it's unnecessary for unusual noise to disturb or interfere with the peace of life, the peace and quiet of other persons. These are just infractions of the municipal code that I see. Nine sixteen point sixty, the device cannot be heard from, the disturbance that has a device that can be heard three hundred feet or greater from source is regulated. Engine brakes that shall be hung off before the driver or any vehicle to operate or cause in a manner to be audible at a distance of three hundred feet from the motor vehicle. And currently enforced on that road is an engine brake regulation on that road. But a gun itself produces eight to one hundred and sixty-two decibels and an engine brake produces around eight to eight and three decibels. Under flood plain regulations, most structures shall be located without full compliance in the terms of the chapter provided they do not include placement of structures. There's two structures on that property, there's a garage and there's a shed and there's a shooting, shooting, shooting bench building and all that are, there shouldn't be any placement of structure, shouldn't be any fill or other obstruction. The storage of material or equipment or extrusion authorization was regulated within the law. It's a conservation district and the district itself is intended to prevent erosion areas that are subject to periodic flooding, such development, hazard, resource, and asset heat, the safety from water habitat, erosion control, natural drainage ways to generally provide ecological safe, sound land use and ecological, sensitive areas. Open burning is permitted, is not permitted on commercial properties, even though there are burn pits down in that area used for getting rid of certain items that are not long in use. Waste storage containers are required for every person of the code, this is the municipal code. Junk loader vehicles, there's a junk loader vehicle down there. To remain on a private property with corporate limits of the city constitutes a threat to health, safety, welfare, and safety of the city. There's infractions on EPA and the number one thing I wanted to say, the current range, the current range is in violation, there's an every EPA guideline for the best management practice for the BP level of the EPA. First number one rule is no shooting activity nearby wetlands or United States waterways. EPA code twenty-nine, CFR nineteen-ten, ten-twenty-five. Let standards of compliance records are required from cradle to grave just to operate an outdoor gun range within city limits. EPA Clean Air Act has noise, noise abatement actions. Clean Water Act of wetlands provide the discharge of pollutant by any person into the waters of the United States, tuning into water including wetlands constitutes a discharge. Foul waste emissions under the CWA, CWA as a pollutant are subject to regulations. Other OSHA rulings. The current range does not meet any of the U.S. Department of Energy Health and Safety and Security for the range designing criteria. It lacks a site location, selection, range planning, surface danger, containment, administrative records, also scoring, so we need the site selection preparation considerations. And basically, all that is trying to say is it should be looked into.
Yeah, we appreciate all of your study and everything that you provided for us. Is a solution maybe for you and me and Jacob and Chief Beau Miller to kind of sit down and see what your thoughts are and?
Yeah. I'm just trying to see if we can get, you know, a limited use and not that way.
Sure.
But maybe combine it with the indoor environmental grounds.
Okay.
Maybe combine it with annual training, you know, in certain other areas or, you know, just because it poses such a risk in the location and we're pumping twelve million dollars into a, into a.
Waste water treatment.
Waste water treatment facility, you know, which poses regulations constituted on the charter.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be something that would be pretty well.
Okay. Yeah, let's get together and sure, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You bet, yeah. Thanks for coming. Anyone else? Okay.
I just got to give it all down. Janice Moore from Algonquin, got a couple of questions, I don't know who would be the best to answer. I've been trying to get some answers and getting a story from one, a story from another, another. One of them is in regards to the Dodge Street project. Who's responsible for the upkeep of the flowers, the garbage cans thereby dumped? I pulled a lot of weeds prior to the rag rag event and it was kind of embarrassing. Even still, I contacted some members and suggested the garbage cans be cleaned up. We were trying to make a nice presentation with a lot of people coming to town, didn't look so good. I do pride myself in having pulled a lot of weeds out of that spot, which leads to my concern of if, I think I saw pictures here one night of Nebraska Street, so I'm hoping that we're going to upkeep that too if we're putting flowers in there. These, I personally thought they should have been replaced before the event, somebody should have done something. Leads me to what committees handle what projects? I've been involved in a project, I don't know who's aware of it, in which I had a house that needed to be taken down. A lot of misunderstanding, a lot of concerns yet to this day on that. And I need to know, as do any other people, like you mentioned the bits, small engine place that had the tree growing out. Who do we know, who is our advocate to talk to before concerns that I have come to the fruition that they are? So if somebody could at some point get back to me, I've heard there's a committee, I've heard there's not, I don't know who to talk to. Appreciate that, thank you.
Appreciate all of your work with pulling the weeds and everything for us too, so. Okay, anyone else like to speak? Okay, seen none, we'll move then to agenda item number eight, which is our consent agenda and that includes approving the minutes from our last council meeting, April 17th, approving the bills that are to be paid this cycle and approve Jacob's administration report.
One second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Jody, any discussion? We'll call Deb.
Jody. Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Motion carried. We'll move then to agenda item number nine, which is a public hearing and it's 5:25 and we'll open that public hearing. This is a public hearing concerning the 2023 airport runway.
Hi, we have probably a new face for some of you, Ron Wrightsall of Bolton, Inc., here with us to discuss the airport project. This is a public hearing regarding the planned specifications and form of contract for phase one of the proposed runway displacement and extension. Since the notice was published, we have not received any specific comments in response to it. With that, Ron, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, David Jacob. Like I said, Ron, I'm also of Bolton, Inc. I'm here to talk about the five to south, so I'll give you a little bit of background and we'll go through some business reasons that we cover all of the, the resolution that you had before you as well. Like I said, this is a runway project for a two hundred and forty foot extension on the south side and a two thousand foot or two hundred foot displacement on the north side, which then will allow whole runway lengths to be operational around four thousand feet. It will also remove some obstructions that are in the way, which will get your nighttime operations back right now. The FAA has closed your night operations down because of those obstructions, thus leading to the extension on the south side and shifting of the runway. Okay? It will also include some improvements to the turnaround for safety, air fat at each end of runway, will have a much larger turnaround for that, as well as some additional storms or, for extended storms of projects that will go through length of runway and particularly down the south end and down the east. Okay? We did receive bids for the project and this is phase one, which is simply grading and drainage portions of it. We are in the process of doing phase two, which will be designed this year and there'll be a bid for that this fall. Okay? And so payment will occur in 2024, the grading now will occur in, occur in 2023. We're looking at closing the runway down for about a week, setting up the runway, destriping, displaced, do a temporary threshold displacement, so we still have operations and obstructions in that, and then open it back up once the grading is done. So, and we did receive bids on April 21st, we received three bids, the summary is in your pocket, coal excavating, LLC is the low bidder at one million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. That is above the engineers estimate. And when we looked at the bids, the reason for that was solely and almost purely in anything related to concrete, the concrete pipe, the concrete Florida in sections were all significantly higher than what we had. We've seen that in other projects and in other bids, that some of the cement and concrete items this year are going at a much higher price. We then presented that bid to the FAA and the FAA says that they will fund the existing project at ninety percent, but also the additional slightly higher cost at ninety percent. So our recommendation when we get to that point for the resolution is to award it to both.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions?
As I understand it, then once the excavating done, it's got to sit a while?
It'll sit over the winter and then get a previous saw.
Okay.
Five or two there and then, like I said, then we'll do the paving. Because we do have some incisions of field, take one in section.
And I do know we had a question just about, kind of, there could be an overview of what phase two will look like. So since Ron, do you mind kind of, I was expecting Joe to be here, so I'm not sure how plugged you are of phase two, but just, you know, the concrete work, kind of what that will look like next fall?
The concrete work will be about seventy-five feet wide by two hundred and forty feet on the south end, as well as the concrete work for both of the turnaround areas on both the north end and the south. So this phase one will actually get it up to the subgrade and then phase two will add a slight aggregate base underneath the concrete and the traffic areas.
And when does the road actually close?
Be this fall.
This fall?
Well, we agreed, right? You've already reached out to the county for that and they're already agreeing with that.
And yeah, the authorization to close that road, because half of it's in city, half of it's in county, that's all been approved by the council and the board supervisors. I don't think so.
Thank you very much. It's 5:30 and we'll close that public hearing. And we'll move to agenda item number 10, which is also a public hearing and it's 5:30 and we'll open that public hearing. This one is regarding the 2023 Central Park improvements.
This was a project that we had a rebid from earlier in the year after we didn't receive any rebids the first time around. The plan, specifications, and form of contract to say this hearing were approved at the April 7th city council meeting. We had bid opening on April 27th. We had two bids from Bob Becker Construction and Jensen Builders. The engineer's estimate for the project was one million, two hundred and seven thousand. The low bid was Bob Becker Construction in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, so just under two percent above the engineer's estimate. We have not received any public comments specific to this notice since it was published.
Thank you. 5:31 and we will close that public hearing then. Move to new business agenda item number 11, and this is a resolution that deals with the airport runway extension.
Ron, if you want to come up again or?
Now, so, um, you know, this item is, we just had the public hearing on, it's approving just the plan, specifications, uh, form of contract, the actual awarding of the contract and the FAA grant, um, since it's federal money, those are in two separate resolutions, uh, so this was just the, the plans and specifications.
Anybody have any questions? Ron, or? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve this resolution then.
Motion to approve resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Brad, any discussion? Hearing that vote please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And we'll move to agenda item number twelve, and this is a resolution that also refers to the airport runway extension.
So this, uh, uh, resolution approves, um, awarding the, uh, construction contract contingent upon the city receiving FAA, or FAA funding, and then approves, um, the FAA grant application, uh, per the, uh, notice in the contract, uh, the city has the right to hold bids for ninety days, um, to, to provide, to allow this time to proceed. So Ron, if you just find kind of timeline, and would we can expect a, a, official response and contract from, from FAA for, for that grant agreement?
Right, right, that's always a pivotal role that has to depend, or greatly depends on FAA and their procedure and everything else, cause once they receive the grant request from us, um, they will review it and send it out from Kansas City out to Washington, D.C., and then back from Kansas City, and then we'll get a notice that the grant is in place. But, um, this project is being funded by state of portionment dollars, which again are ninety percent federal, ten percent local, and because those dollars have already been allocated to the state, it would be, um, I would guess a lot sooner than if there was just purely discretionary, I would say.
And then the?
Already reached out, kind of, implementing the, the extra cost that we're expecting?
Yes, we've already got that big conference, that very, know where the bids came in after, they know what the grant request will be, and we already got the, the new phrase of Oracle saying, how we can do that.
Okay.
And actually Rodney, attached on there is a letter from the FAA recommending we award the bid, so that's pretty solid that they have found the funding.
Yeah, for some reason it fell apart, you know, if we have a government shutdown or something, and it doesn't get worked out before then, I mean, we haven't had to worry about that a couple of years, but maybe we might have to here coming up. You know, yeah, that kind, contracts contingent on that funding, so if that doesn't come through for any reason, um, you know, that we'll just have to delay the project a year.
But your resolution is contingent upon getting funding, or the contract is contingent upon getting the funding.
Yeah.
Yes, just with that, price coming in a little bit higher there due to the concrete, I mean, there's no indication that this is just a spike in concrete prices that we expected to be any different a year from now, anything like that, no indications, is this probably where we're gonna be at going forward, concrete prices are just gonna be that much higher?
Right, when we did some more research, and see why the naturally the concrete prices are going up, a lot of it has to do with hurricanes and that, uh, stuff that happened along the construction that's going on with that. Um, the, um, infrastructure fund that was passed is causing a lot of, a huge demand for concrete, and so the cement aspect is part of that that's being integrated, um, that's why the price is going up, so I don't foresee that those prices are becoming higher anytime soon, because of.
Make a motion then, we accepting the bids and award the contingency contract.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Don, any other discussion? Vote please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Don?
Motion carried. Agenda item number thirteen is also a resolution that pertains to the Central Park, uh, improvement.
Uh, so same as, um, the public hearing that I had for the airport, um, we had a public hearing on this project here, uh, just a few moments ago, um, as you said, bid opening was on April twenty-seventh, the low bid being, uh, Bob Becker Construction of Wesley in the amount of one million two hundred and thirty thousand one hundred seventy dollars, um, so it was recommended, uh, that city council approve the resolution awarding the con, the contract to Bob Becker Construction, um, once that's done, we'll, um, you know, reach out to them after this, um, look to schedule a, a pre-construction meeting, and just kind of get an idea on the timeline on how they plan to tackle this and phasing it, um, so we can coordinate, um, work on, um, the remaining work that has to be done on the skate park, um, as well as hopefully we're gonna be able to time some, someplace here in May to do some sort of opening, recognition, celebration event for that. Um, it's usable right now, but there is some concrete work that needs to, to be redone. And then the, uh, phase one, uh, deadline of the, or, of the contract is the kind of north section, uh, sidewalk, um, that's to be done by August first, and then by the, um, end of calendar year twenty-three, all the work along the, uh, Philip Street, U.S. one sixty-nine, um, right away is to be done, and then the next big, uh, contract date is substantial completion July one of twenty-four, and then final completion ready for, um, completely done ready for final payment August one, twenty twenty-four, so, uh, we'll know some more details after the pre-con meeting, uh, but we anticipate, you know, most of the, um, general site work, sidewalk that'll get done this calendar year, um, the utility extensions and some of the basic earthwork and really setting the stage, um, for the splash pad when it, um, to be installed, you know, right away in, in spring of twenty twenty-four, um, on that, so when we, we did the rebidding just on the timeline left in this construction year as well to make it attractive, we did space those, uh, deadlines out a little bit, but even under the originally bid timeline, um, we weren't anticipating the splash pad actually being operational till calendar year twenty twenty-four anyways, uh, you know, so in, in, we're not losing a whole season, um, compared to the original bid, um, as opposed, you know, this, we're looking, I know, a few weeks difference, so.
I'd make a motion then to, uh, to approve the resolution accepting the bid to Bob Becker awarding the contract for Central Park.
A motion from Rodney, second from Jody, um, any discussion? Hearing that vote please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number fourteen concerns a repayment of revolving loan fund.
Bridget Bodie, owner of Bub's Pie Shop, um, has, uh, had a retail RLF loan with the city, uh, that's been paid in full, so this resolution, uh, simply acknowledges that, um, and releases the promissory doubt and security agreement. And I know, uh, she's been closed now for at least the last couple of months, but I think I did see a sign there the other day, that it might be May second or sometime here in May opening back up, so I'm excited to see that.
I'll move over to resolution.
Second.
Motion from Tyler, second from Don, uh, any discussion? Vote please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And thank you, Bub, for, uh, that repayment, and we certainly wish you continued success. Looking forward to you opening again soon. Agenda item number fifteen is to approve a change order with the library renovation project, and I think Lori is here.
Yep, so we invited, uh, library director Lori Walton to join us this evening, just to review the change order, as well as provide a, an update on the exterior construction, um, and if, uh, there's time and she's up for some of the fun and exciting programs the library has planned for the summer.
One of the questions that I continue to get is when will you be done? And we answer soon, um, there were some items that were cut incorrectly, some items that were placed incorrectly, and still need to build some materials, and right now, um, the Mason City Glass needs to come and finish some work, they plan on being there May third this week, um, custom sheet metal, things that they will be receiving all of their supplies soon, and they'll get things finished, and lighting, I hope all of you have had the chance to look at the lighting in the evenings, um, it's not done yet, we still need to get it programmed correctly, um, but we are so very close to being done with the exterior, and that's exciting news. In addition, as we've been in the building for a year and a half now, we have figured out that we need some additional space to do messy activities, things like painting and playbill, and things that we wouldn't want to get in the carpet, like food preparation. We had a class last week, we had a limit of sixteen, it filled up very quickly, and now we have a waiting list of eleven, um, to run another program, but that involves cooking and cutting and, and, so we need this additional space, and when the board and I discussed this, we thought that it would be better to remove the asbestos, we did have testing done, and so we removed the asbestos, right now we have ceiling, the wall, and bare floor, and it looks pretty rough in there, um, so, when I visited with the board, we talked about the option of replacing the ceiling and adding LED lights, or maintaining the ceiling that we have and continuing with the fluorescent lights. The board felt very strongly that we should move towards LED, and so, um, Henkel provided a change order, or provided a new update to the contract, and that's what we'd like to go with. Also, uh, three exceptionally good, here are even volunteers dropping last week, and so not only did they work outside and in some of the garden area, um, but they did the first coat of paint for us, and so I'd like to recognize these three people, it was Maggie Vasky, Eva Snyder, and Brooke Ludwig, they were fantastic, and really happy that they were able to help us out on the volunteer project. We're looking for a service group that might be interested in helping us with painting, and so that'll take care of the ceiling, the walls, and then I, uh, asked the local, um, floor people to provide a quote to put in some vinyl floor, so that's where we're at with the stuff, and, um, do any of you have any questions in your wondering about?
The place you're talking about replacing the lights, I think you got that south main meeting room, that's just to the east of that, that empty room there that was kind of undeveloped, or what are you talking about?
So if you go in the south entry, the
Yeah.
entry area, there's the largest room that is right off that entry, and that's the area that we're talking about, so technically we could use that south entrance if we needed to bring people in that direction too. Couple other things I'll tell you about, pretty excited about, um, we're doing some new programming, and so we're working with the State Library of Iowa, and they have an floral history project, um, that we'll be announcing information about, but that will be for people who grew up on a farm or are currently living on a farm, and it will be, um, put on the Iowa Heritage Digital Collection, and also will be transcribed, so I think that's gonna be a fun program. We will also offer this summer family activity pass, which will be available for checkout, so that families can go to some of the Iowa attractions, again, we'll be making an announcement about that very, very soon, and we were just approved, um, by the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services to offer a nutrition and activity program, it's a nine-week course, and we'll be incorporating that into our summer reading program, and the theme this year for summer reading is Find Your Voice, so we are planning a lot of fun activities for that. The north brassy area, we continue to work on plans for that, pretty excited about it, we just got a, we were awarded a fairly large grant, and we'll be making an announcement as soon as they let us do that, and also wanted to point out that the library now has an endowment fund, and we're going to start promoting that very soon. So there's a lot going on, we're excited about it, have a wonderful staff who really helped move all of the things that I was at unrenovated areas before we did the, um, asbestos removal, and I would also really like to thank the city street crew, because time and time again, they have come in and really assisted us with moving the heavy stuff, and it is very much appreciated.
That south, that south entrance is only, it's not open regularly, is it?
It's locked.
That's right, it's not open, okay.
Right, so if we have a special program and say, come in the south entrance, we're gonna unlock, have people come and
Okay.
come in and out there. Any other questions?
No, thank you for everything you're doing and the board's doing, and trying to proceed with getting everything done and make more improvements.
Thanks, Floris.
So, Jay, did we have a dollar amount on that change order, or?
Um, yeah, the, the net, um, change order, um, is seven thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and ten cents, um, there is a, um, allowance in there for floor prep, um, which we ended up not utilizing, so, um, with that taken out, the, the cost of the ceiling demo, new lighting, new ceiling, um, is twelve thousand, uh, dollars, but the, the net on the change order being approved is seven thousand eight fifty-six and ten cents.
Okay, and then that would be coming from city funds, or is there some library fund?
Um, this will come from the, the library's capital, um, accounts, which, yeah, are funded and, um, adequate to, to cover this, so it's the, the money that was fundraised, um, or, you know, otherwise granted or, or left as a, um, donation to the library.
Okay.
And I would add that we had our architect look very closely at this because we weren't sure, um, he thought it was a very reasonable cost and expense for, for what we'd be giving, it includes the demolition that's currently there.
Okay, I want that information, and we move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Tyler, uh, any discussion? Hearing that vote please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number sixteen, this is a request to close some parking spaces.
There's a Little Sprouts daycare, um, on the corner of Call and, um, Dodge Street as requested, uh, permission to, oops, go that wrong way, uh, close, uh, the four angled parking spaces just north of their facility, um, on Call Street on July eleventh, um, from one to four P.M., uh, they're gonna be hosting the Scratch, um, cupcake food truck there, um, so the, uh, looking at the space, how it's used, how it's gonna be set up, taking that space, but facing, um, the sidewalk, uh, we don't see any, um, notable concerns, and so we'd recommend approval.
Dangerous to put the Scratch cupcake back close to where
It might be the only, yeah.
I would move to approve though.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don, um, any other discussion? Hearing that vote please, Deb?
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We're certainly looking forward to July the eleventh. Uh, move into, uh, agenda item number seventeen, this is the first notification of, uh, Carla Kinney's term on the cemetery board that expires extra on May the thirteenth, uh, this is a city council appointment, um, for a six-year term, so, uh, if someone happens to see her or, uh, give her a call, vote.
Would you like me to just email it and have to make it easy for you all?
Great, keep it simple.
Sounds good.
I will email her tomorrow.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Okay, and agenda item number eighteen, this is our final agenda item, and, uh, this is the final notification of, uh, Don Heiple's term expiring the end of May, the end of this month on the AMU Board of Trustees, this is a six-year term, this is a mayoral appointment, um, I visited with Don, he would like to be reappointed, I visited with John Billstein, John would like him to be reappointed as he's a, a good contributing member, so I would entertain a motion to, uh, reappoint Don Heiple on the AMU Board of Trustees for a six-year term. So I would entertain a motion to reappoint Don Hyphal on the AMU Board of Trustees for a six-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Don. Any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, and thank you, Don. So this brings us to the end of the published agenda. And before we do adjourn, I just want to thank the citizens who came up this evening and shared their thoughts. And also would like to thank Chief Bo Miller for being our sergeant-at-arm tonight too. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's five fifty-two.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.